All right. The hour of 6:30 having come and gone 10 minutes ago, I will call to meeting, excuse me, call to order the common council meeting of Tuesday, January 28th, 2025, and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Alder Conklin. Alder Conklin is...
Present.
Alder Curry. Alder Curry is present. Alder Duncan.
Here.
Alder Duncan is present. Alder Evers.
Here.
Alder Evers is present. Alder Field.
Here.
Field is present. Alder Figaro Cole.
Here.
Alder Figaro Cole is present. Alder Govind Rajan.
Here.
Alder Govind Rajan is present. Alder Ughair.
Here.
Ughair is present. Alder Harrington McKenney.
Present.
Harrington McKenney is present. Alder Knox.
Present.
Alder Knox is present. Aldo Latimer Veras.
Here.
Aldo Latimer Veras is present. Aldo Madison.
Here.
Madison is present. Aldo Martinez Rutherford.
Present.
Aldo Martinez Rutherford is present. Aldo Miazzi. Don't see him yet. Aldo Rommel.
Present.
Aldo Rommel is present. Aldo Tischler.
Here.
Aldo Tischler is present. Aldo Revere.
Here.
Aldo Revere is present. Aldo Vidover. Aldo Vidover is present. Aldo O'Helia.
Here.
O'Helia is present. Aldo Bennett is excused. Alder Conklin. I'm sorry, Alder Conklin is present. She was.
Don't see her at the moment.
Do not see her at the moment, but we still have a quorum.
All right. Thank you. I want to start with my usual request and reminder that we're here to do the business of the people of Madison and ask that we do that with grace and kindness, and in particular, refrain from using profanities in our remarks. I'd also like, because this is the only point in the agenda where I can actually talk to you about things that aren't on the agenda, just in case you haven't read your email or the news today, the Federal Office of Management and Budget did issue a memo instructing a temporary pause on federal grants, loans, and financial assistance programs. However, as of this afternoon, a federal judge has issued an administrative stay on that order until Monday afternoon. This directive has the potential to impact tens of millions of dollars in services for the residents of Madison, as it doesn't just impact the city, but also potentially the school district and the county and UW and Madison College and many state agencies and nonprofits. We at the city are currently evaluating what the effects of this directive will be if it is upheld in the courts. There are obviously a lot of unanswered questions, and we are working rapidly to make sense of this, which frankly, over the course of today, has changed basically every hour. So I do have city staff working on an inventory and dollar amount of the federal funds that the city receives directly and the services that could be impacted by these federal actions. We will provide the council with an update when we have that information. In addition, you should expect briefings at finance committee meetings and at CCEC. So for those of you who aren't on those bodies, you might want to add those meetings to your calendar if you're interested in getting those updates. From what I've heard, mayors all across the country, and I imagine governors and other state and local officials are all in the same boat. We are all concerned about public health initiatives, housing programs, food security programs, transportation infrastructure, and much more that could potentially be impacted. But the truth is, at this point in time, we just don't know what the impact will be or how broad it will be. The language in this directive is new, it's unprecedented, it's exceedingly vague, and as you have heard, is already facing legal challenges. So we certainly will inform the public when we know more and keep the council informed as well. I would just ask the council for your patience on this and your collaboration as we work to try and protect our community from the impacts of these federal actions. And I would reassure the community that we are doing our best to both understand what's coming out of the federal government and our best to protect our community from any potential negative impacts. So thanks for the indulgence, and again, we will absolutely keep you updated as we have more information. With that, we will move to our honoring resolutions. Our first item is Legisstar Number 86764, awarding the 18th Annual Jeffrey Clay Erlinger Civility and Public Discourse Award to Madeline Leopold. And as we usually do, if our tech staff is ready, we'd like to start with the video that we have prepared. If our tech staff have that. Thank you.
When I was five years old, I was going to have surgery called a spinal fusion. And so my parents asked me what it was that I'd wanted to do before the surgery. They were expecting me to say, you know, I wanted to go to an amusement park. My answer was, I wanted to meet Mr. Rogers. Would you show me how you make your chair go?
Okay, sure.
We didn't do any rehearsal. He basically just told me, like, when I ask you why you're in a wheelchair, and you might sing a song, and we'll just let it roll. And I said, all right. Not your fancy chair. That's just beside. Mr. Rogers made me feel as if he was talking only to, only to me. You know, there's obviously things I can't do, but it doesn't really matter as much what I can't do, it's what I can do. That's how I try and live my life.
It's a highlight of the year to watch that. For the reading of the resolution, we'll turn first to Alder Evers.
Whereas the Madison Common Council created the Jeffrey Clay Erlinger Civility and Public Discourse Award in memory of Jeffrey Erlingers, many contributions to the city of Madison. And whereas the Jeffrey Clay Erlinger Civility and Public Discourse Award Committee has selected Madeline Leopold as recipient of the 2024 award. She is an individual who exemplifies the values that are fundamental to this award and were so admirably demonstrated by Jeff Erlinger. Whereas Madeline served on the City of Madison Board of Park Commissioners from 2010 to 2021, and as president from April 2018 to May 2020. Madeline has also served as the Park Commission representative on the board of the Madison Park Foundation, the Park's Long Range Planning Committee, the Park's Habitat Stewardship Subcommittee, and the Gulf Subcommittee. And whereas Madeline cares deeply about the protection and enjoyment of the land that makes up Madison's public parks, she is an avid user of public parks, never taking for granted the opportunities they provide. As a park commissioner, Madeline invited, led, and actively participated in constructive conversations about the issues brought before the board. She carefully questioned any use of parks that would limit public access to them. She argued for the value of unprogrammed parks, where it's possible to simply be in a natural setting and appreciate its gifts. She helped the park commission and members of the public balance the competing priorities of the park system.
Thank you. Whereas Madeline left a legacy of policies to protect park ecosystems and foster equitable access to park amenities, examples of Madeline's depth touch were her work with the Gulf Subcommittee during the time it was developing long-term recommendations about the continued existing of public golf in Madison in the face of significant financial and logistical challenges. She also led meetings regarding the inclusion of community garden space in parks, the Garver Fit Mill development, the adoption of standards for sound amplification in parks, more consistent evaluation of private events that will exclude the public from park use, and enactment of a new policy of on dogs in parks. By focusing on both process and outcome while prioritizing access for all, Madeline was a voice for equity and inclusion in our park system. Whereas Madeline is a regular reader at the Arboretum Madison Reads Leopold, an event in commemoration of the conservation ethic developed by Madeline's grandfather Aldo Leopold, the first director of the UW Madison Arboretum. It promotes, it promotes young people learning about the natural world and the land ethic about which her grandfather so eloquently wrote. Madeline is on the advisory board of the Wisconsin Sea Grand Academy Program that supports research, education, and outreach for the conservation and sustainable use of Wisconsin waters, particularly the Great Lakes. Now, therefore, be a result that Madeline Leopold has been chosen to receive the 18th Annual Jeffrey Clay Erlinger Civility in Public Discourse Award, and be a further result that the mayor Rhodes Conway and the common council of the city of Madison, Wisconsin, congratulate and thank Madeline for all she has done and continues to do for our Madison community.
Thank you, Alders. We'll take that as moved and seconded, and I'd invite the Erlingers and Madeline to come up to the podium. And President Figaro Cole to present the parchment. We'll stand informal for photos. The Parks folks want to come and get a picture here, too? Do either of the Erlingers want to say anything?
I'll just make a couple remarks.
Please.
This is the 18th year. Every year, it's such an honor to be here and to know that people are still thinking of Jeff and remembering him, and that there are so many people to honor and will continue to be. One thing I got to say is every single time I have my notes going back, I always say something like, well, this year, you know, civility is even more important. But it's funny, because this year it's really more important. Madeline shares Jeff's incredible spirit and drive and the idea of getting things done and doing it in a civil way. And I have to give a shout out to Eric because something he mentioned to me when we were talking a couple months ago, which is, it's not good enough to have good parks, we have to strive to have great parks. And from what I've learned about what Madeline's been up to, she's very much carrying through that spirit. So it's not just honoring, of course, her accomplishments, but also the way in which she has done it, because that's really what Jeff's legacy is about. We're honored to be part of this once again.
Thank you. Madeline?
So Mayor Rhodes Conway and all the members of the commission, the common council, I want to thank you for this very, very special award. And I also want to thank my colleague and fellow member of the Park Commission, Emily Ghanam, for nominating me behind my back, I would like to say. Thank you very much. It was, it was a great privilege to serve on the Park Commission for the many years that I did. I have grown to have the greatest respect for Eric, for Eric Nepp and his incredible park staff. Serving on the Park Commission opened my eyes to the many, many challenges that park staff face on a regular basis. I'm sure that's true of every department of government in the city, but I think it's especially true for parks. I suspect that each one of us can name our favorite park. Mine is Wingra. Those 11 acres of open space in Wingra Park always connect me to something profound and freeing. And it's, it's this sense of personal connection, even of belonging. And it's this sense of personal connection, even of belonging, that one gets going time and time again to one's favorite park, that makes the process of decision-making about parkland uses so difficult and so important, especially now as our city is growing. But this is where public discourse in civility, or the other way around, civility and public discourse comes in. Because the monthly meetings of the Park Commission are one of those rare intersections where members of the public can meet with their government to talk about concerns, personal concerns. If a registrant comes away from a meeting feeling heard, feeling listened to, feeling respected, there's a bit of trust that is created in that process. That's important. The opposite happens, too. I will never forget my worst night on the Park Commission was when a registrant walked away saying that his voice apparently didn't matter because the issue had already been decided. That's not right. That shouldn't happen. The process should be to reflect and value the hard work of city staff, but at the same time to provide genuine opportunities for members of the public to contribute to the decision-making process. So once again, thank you for this remarkable opportunity, both to speak and for being able to work with parks. But I particularly want to thank the Erlanger family for having raised this incredible young man who is a role model for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Madeline, and congratulations. It's been moved and seconded. Alder Evers.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say how thrilled I am that tonight we're honoring Madeline Leopold, neighbor and resident of District 13. Little did I know, when I met Madeline six years ago, that her familial connection to one of my big influences in life, her grandfather Aldo Leopold, the author of Sand County Almanac. But Madeline has not hung out on those cocktails without doing the hard work to show her commitment to that same legacy, particularly her very strong commitment to public access to our parks. And her remarks just now about the need for civility and some of the controversies that we have in our city as we push for the much-needed, much-agreed-upon need for more housing in our city, when we're facing such a shortage of housing and the impact that has on our housing cost. But that does not mean that we're not able to hold in tension, inappropriate tension and dialogue about our other values as a city, including our open spaces, our parks, historic preservation, the other things that we value. It's very important that we have people like Madeline in our community who embody the spirit of Jeff Erlinger to remind us that we can have these controversies with civility and kindness and move forward as a city, holding our values dear as we solve some of our more challenging problems. So thank you, Madeline, and thank you very much to Jeff's family.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Faver.
Thank you, Mayor. Like you, I look forward to this council meeting each and every year. I look forward to seeing my friends Pam and Howie Erlanger here. And I think of my friend Jeff, who I don't think I need to remind any of my colleagues because I usually, previously, after an election of this body, go into a much longer biography of Jeff so that everyone knows who the real Jeff Erlinger was. I know I did that last year, so I won't have to do that this year. But for those watching that might not be familiar, we tragically lost Jeff in 2007 at the very young age of 36 years old. In his short life, he accomplished so much, and I had the real honor and pleasure of working with him when he was president of the State Langdon Neighborhood Association, and through his profound advocacy for the campus area, but even more of a legacy here in City Hall through his work on city committees, especially for people with disabilities and their lack of transportation, among other efforts that he worked on. When I learned the excellent news that Madeline was this year's recipient, and I have to say, it is shocking to me that it's been 18 years of the Jeffrey Clay Erlinger Civility and Public Discourse Award. And I have to say once again, Pam and Howie, I give you so much credit for keeping your son's legacy alive by joining us at this time every year, for Pam's long service on the award committee. It really is telling when you see that the plaques are now filled up in the whole frame that, Madeline, you probably didn't even know this before tonight, but your name, you know, will be memorialized forever, we hope, outside the chambers here, along with a lot of wonderful individuals that have served our community so well over many years. I'm sure you know many of them personally. But in any event, when I learned that Madeline was the recipient of this year's award, I immediately thought, what a brilliant selection, what a great nomination. But especially because knowing that Pam and Howie led a very successful campaign not that many years ago on the 30th anniversary of the ADA law to raise money for the fully-accessible playground that exists at Rannabon Park today, working with our Madison Parks Foundation, which obviously Madeline served on the board of, as we heard. I think, as I say, this is an excellent choice. I think from my observations, Madeline, of your wonderful tenure, almost a dozen years on the Board of Park Commissioners, I saw you in action. I was not a regular attendee. I've never had the honor of serving on the Board of Park Commissioners, but I remember attending enough meetings to realize what a valuable contributor you were to our park system and to our community. I remember attending at least two, if not more, meetings when you were the chair, and what a great job you did facilitating the commission. So it was not a surprise to me, as I say, that you were named this year's recipient of this, I think, very special award. I think you exemplify it, and I think it's further telling that the leadership of the Parks Division is here tonight to honor you. Fellow former members of the, your former colleagues on the commission are here tonight. So congratulations, very well deserved. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. President Figueroa Cole?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to second everything that has been said so far, but I also, as a council president, the president sits on this board. Didn't know that, but we learned that I had to sit with you guys, so I got to meet the family and participate in the process of selecting somebody. So I want to make sure that we also thank all the people that apply, because we had quite a few applicants this time around, and it was, we had a lot of good people. Like, it was, you know, we kept on voting, and it was a tough choice. I feel a little bit biased because, you know, it's like, oh, Madeline, I know this name. So, but it's still, the scores were high for many of the applicants. I just wanted to encourage the public to continue to participate every year on this program. And I want to say, I mean, to Madeline, thank you for the welcoming. When I first came a Parks Commissioner, you know, every year, when the mayor is assigning committees, the first year she asked you for your committees, and I gave them my preferred committees, Parks wasn't in the list. So she kind of forced that upon me, and I'm like, why? Why? And then the second year, when she asked, I, you know, I said, well, you know, you may want to sit down for this one. My one committee that I prefer to be in is on Parks. And then she just laughed at me. So I can't believe how much I enjoy to be on that. It feels like a community in itself. The relationship between park and the staff is such a, you know, fluent thing, like, I really, I don't know, I think that for these, like, more Alders need to experience how that community works and how we make decisions there. So I have learned a lot about parks. I have made a point since I'm in parks to just not repeat parks, just like go and find, because we had a lot of parks in this city, it's like 6,000, 6,000, I don't know, whatever, of land, so acres of land, I don't know. I have made a commitment to actually just try to visit all of them, and I'm still not done. And it's been four years working here. So thank you, and very well deserved. So thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you, Alder. Is there objection to me speaking from the chair? Thank you. I also want to congratulate you, Madeline, and thank you for your many, many years of service on the Parks Commission. Our boards, commissions, and committees really rely on people like you to lead them and to run good meetings so that not only can we get the business that needs to happen done, but also you can make sure that commissioners hear each other and that the public is heard. And it's a special skill to facilitate a good meeting. And it is not everybody who can step into that role. So thank you and congratulations. And thank you, of course, to the Erlingers as well. You know, my thought tonight is that perhaps, you do say every year, this year more than ever, we need civility. And so my thought for this year is that perhaps certainly folks at other levels of government might learn from this, but since they're probably not listening, maybe we all should just act as if we're trying to be worthy of this award. And to act as if maybe somebody might nominate us someday, and that we might be actually considered for the award. I think it would be a good spirit to take forward in our service. And to that end, I'd like to publicly apologize to Alder Knox for mishearing him at the last meeting and snapping. It was not particularly civil of me, and Alder, I'm sorry. I appreciate you calling me to clear that up. And I just wanted to publicly recognize that you did that and that we're good now. So thank you, and let's all try and live up to Jeff's legacy. Alder Wahili.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madeline, congratulations. I haven't seen you for a long, long time. Madeline and I served on the United Way Lawn Executive, and we were in the combined campaign. And I'm not surprised that you won this award in terms of civility, because you really showed, you know, civility, understanding, compassion, and empathy during our Lawn Executive time of four or five months. And I think we learned so much from each other, and it was so, you know, refreshing to see you from all, you know, those years, but I just want to say congratulations and thank you for, you know, being part of the City of Madison Parks and doing the great work for the city and for the commissions, and appreciate. So congratulations.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording enthusiastic unanimous "I" vote? Seeing no objection, we'll record that vote, and congratulations again, Madeline. Thank you all. All right, that will bring us to item number two, which is Legisstar 86782, expressing sincere appreciation to Madison Police Department Chief of Police Dr. Sean F. Barnes for his four years of dedicated service to the city of Madison. President Figueroa Cole.
Myself. Sorry. Okay. So whereas Sean F. Barnes was hired as the Chief of Police for the Madison Police Department on February 1, 2021, and whereas Chief Barnes resigned from the Madison Police Department to assume the role of Chief of Police in Seattle, Washington, and whereas Chief Barnes led the MPD honorably by remaining committed to the department's mission, vision, and core values while striving to be the national model for policing through community partnerships, evidence-based policing, and research-informed practice. And whereas Chief Barnes guided the MPD through the first strategic planning process in many years and helped establish a five-year plan that prioritizes Madison-centric policing, public communication, youth engagement, and workplace culture. And where Chief Barnes supported and encouraged staff's collaboration and support for Madison Police Civilian Oversight Board and the Office of the Independent Monitor. And whereas through Chief Barnes' leadership and guidance, the Madison Police Department successfully implemented stratified policing and evidence-based crime reduction and prevention model that has demonstrated significant reductions in victimization in both persons and property crimes, has led to increasing community engagement in Madison, and has strengthened accountability practices within the ranks of the MPD towards crime prevention efforts founded on actionable and timely data. And where Chief Barnes has successfully positioned the MPD to remain committed to data-informed decision-making, a strong crime prevention and reduction model, evidence-based policing practices, and effective and collaboratively collaborative problem-solving with the Madison community for many years to come. And whereas Chief Barnes has regularly encouraged his staff to always research, study, and explore new evidence-based models and practices as a strong commitment to the continuous improvement of police service for our community. And whereas Chief Barnes recently led MPD's response to the incredibly tragic incident at the Abundant Life Christian School and did so with distinction, a high degree of professionalism, and with the utmost respect for the victims of the incident, our first responders, the Abundant Life School community, and the entire Madison community. Now, therefore, be a result that the mayor and the Madison Common Council expressed their sincere appreciation to Madison Police Chief Sean F. Barnes for his years of dedicated service and many accomplishments while leading the Madison Police Department.
Thank you. We'll take that as moved by President Figueroa Cole and seconded by Vice President Duncan. Thank you. We do have Chief Barnes with us on video. Chief, would you like to speak?
Yes, ma'am. First of all, good evening, everyone. I have not been number two on the agenda for a very, very long time. So how long do I have, Mayor? Six hours, four hours, or should I, I'll just keep it short. I just wanted to say thank you to City Council, as well as to the mayor, for this great honor. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve the community in Madison. I want to say that Madison is a very, very special place. It is a place where the men and women of the Police Department come every day, and it is their honor and duty to serve the community. And so I want to say thank you to the men and women that I work with, professional staff, sworn officers of the Madison Police Department. The last thing that I will say is that over the last four years, it's really been an amazing journey and experience for me, full of a lot of sacrifice, full of a lot of learning and growth for me and for the department. None of what we accomplished, we could have done by one person. No one person is responsible for the great things that was written on the resolution. Everything that was written on the proclamation, if you will, is a collective of a lot of work done by a lot of people, certainly not just me. So I certainly share this with the men and women of the Madison Police Department. I'm sorry I could not be there in person. The travel and trying to get ready for my new assignment has been a lot, but in everything I do, I will certainly take Madison with me. But in everything I do, I will certainly take Madison with me. And lastly, Madison is a special place for me. Many of you know this, but my uncle Lorenzo lived, came to Madison in the seventies to attend the university. And so my grandmother had nine children. She sent most of them to college, but her first child, she sent to the University of Wisconsin at Madison. That just tells you what an amazing and special place this community is and what amazing and a special person she was to have the wisdom to send her firstborn son out of nine children to Madison, where he lived most of his life and retired to Merle, Wisconsin. I am so appreciative of this opportunity. I'm so appreciative of this honor. Thank you, Mayor, for guiding me through this, this process, for getting to know me and getting to understand what I believe is the way, what we believe is the right way to police. And that is with partnership with our community and understanding that we have to work together in order to make things better. We're at a very difficult place, I think, right now in our country. And we will have to practice some partnerships in order to make our community better and to truly serve the people that entrust us with their safety and with their well-being. And so finally, thank you to City Council. I certainly appreciate this honor and you will forever be a friend to me and a colleague and a coworker. And if you ever need me, I'm certainly one phone call away. Thank you so much for this amazing honor.
Thank you, Chief. We do have a few folks who might like to say a few words to you as well. Alder Knox.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, Chief, first of all, I just want to say that we really would like you to know that Madison was very fortunate to have someone of your expertise in the field among us. And I certainly learned quite a bit the four years that you were here. You are always a professional. And I think that was especially demonstrated in those opportunities where there were difficult or tragic situations. And you always seem to come through to move us through that crisis. So I really do appreciate that as well. And I just wanted you to know, I appreciate personally your, your service and your support and just wanted to just wish you, you know, all the best in your new endeavor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to wish you well, Chief Barnes. You came here at a difficult time in our city. And the mark of a public servant is the results of their service. You left our city better for the work that you did. And that's to your credit. I wish you well. I wish your family well in this transition. And I have family and friends in Seattle. And I have told them all that they're getting a good guy to be their next chief. Thank you so much for the last four years. Blessings to you. Wish you well. Congratulations. Bye.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Meade.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I as well wanted to definitely wish the chief well and thank him for a great time that he's been in Madison. To have a police chief to reach out to and be really responsive, to have a police chief that actually, when you talk about having a community event about gun violence, taking it very seriously, coming to the table with data and a lot of things that he's already implemented here as far as to enable us to move forward. And just wanted to say that even though he might not have got the chance to see body cameras come to fruition, I appreciate him getting it started and hopefully, hopefully one day I'll hear about it, being on offices here in Madison. So I just want to thank you so much for your service and always, always being responsive every single time I reached out to you. So thank you and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. Alder Latimer Burris.
Thank you, Chief Barnes. We just wanted to say, just echo what my colleagues have said. You have done an excellent job in a difficult environment for policing and a whole list of other reasons. So over the time that you're leaving, so many people have said they are so sad that you are leaving. But Seattle is certainly thrilled and so lucky to have you. So thank you for your service. Thank you for staying grounded to the facts and having empathy, listening and understanding. A lot of people don't know that you've done a lot of work behind the scenes. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Alder. No other Alders wishing to speak. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor. And thank you once more, Chief. Safe travels. Don't be a stranger. You're getting a round of applause in the room. And you, you're always welcome back in Madison anytime you want to come visit us. All right, then our third item tonight is Legis. 86829, celebrating February 2025 is Black History Month in the City of Madison. We do not have anyone to receive this proclamation. So motion, please.
Move to adopt.
Adopt. Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there questions or discussion? Seeing none of either, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item three? Seeing no objection, that item is adopted. That will take us to disclosures and recusals. Are there any disclosures or recusals from members on tonight's agenda? Alder Vitter.
Item 27, at least until all federal funding is halted, I am still an employee of the Department of Health Services. That will not affect my vote on this matter.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other disclosures or recusals? Seeing none, then we'll move to the presentation of the consent agenda. President Figueroa Cole.
Thank you, Mayor. A consent agenda is moved with the recommended action listed for each item on the agenda, including public hearings except one, items which have registrants wishing to speak, two, items which Alders have separated out for discussion, debate purposes. This document lists majority items, agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda, items for exclusion, items introduced from the floor and agenda items with corrections. Agenda items that are supermajority items. Supermajority items, supermajority vote items will be recorded as unanimous votes unless a RCO or exclusion is requested. Legis. 86427, amending the police department's operating budget and authorizing the mayor and chief of police or designee to accept two grand awards for $70,000 for overtime and supplies for national integrated ballistic information network, firearm ballistic casings and digital evidence investigative, investigative, okay, investigative cases. Fifteen votes required. Legis. 86505, amending the police department operating budget and authorizing the mayor to sign Wisconsin Department of Health Services obviate abatement efforts by law enforcement grant award contracts in the additional amounts of $15,000 and $153,939 to support the Madison Area Resource Initiative Mayor, Mary. Fifteen votes required. Legis. 86533, amending the 2025 adopted operating budget for the planning division to apply for and accept a $30,000 grant from the certified local government program and authorizing the planning, the planning division to retain a consultant to undertake the work pursuant to the terms of the grant. Fifteen votes required. Agenda item 86599, amending the metro transit operating budget to provide additional contracted services for the City of Verona and incorporating of federal planning funds. Fifteen votes required. Agenda item 86630, approving plans and specifications for Hermina Pedestrian Bridge and amending the 2025 engineering major streets capital budget. Fifteen votes required. Legis. File 86634, amending the 2025 sewer utility and stormwater utility operating budgets for coverage from the insurance fund and authorizing the replacement of equipment vehicle destroyed in an accident. Fifteen votes required. Agenda item, Legis. 86415, approving a certified survey map of property owned by Claire Mangasarian and Mangasarian Survivors Trust located at 6021 Old Middleton Road, which proposes a deep residential lot. Fourteen votes required. Agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda, there's none. There were no exclusions at the time of this document. And at the time of this document, there was no introductions from the floor or corrections.
Thank you, Alder. We do have one registrant on item 36. So that will be excluded. Are there other items that Alders wish to have excluded from the consent agenda? Alder Knox.
Actually, I was going to add 36, so thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other items that Alders would like to see excluded from the consent agenda? Seeing none, and let's just run through that one more time. Items 26, 27, 29, 31, 34 and 35 are all 15-vote items. Item 38 is a 14-vote item. We have no recommendations different from what's on the agenda. Item 36 will be excluded. And there are no introductions from the floor or corrections. Good? Good. Then a motion, please, President Figueroa Cole.
Move to adopt the consent agenda.
Moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda and the recommendations therein? Seeing no objection, consent agenda is adopted. That will take us to public comment. And we have one registrant wishing to speak on item 36. Bonnie Rowe of District 11. Do we have Bonnie?
Mayor, I don't see Bonnie online either.
All right, well then, we will move on.
Mayor, it looks like Bonnie Rowe just signed in.
Oh, okay. On item 36, Bonnie.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Apparently the YouTube is a little bit slower than the actual meeting, so I wasn't ready to go. But anyway, I just wanted you guys to discuss this item because I think it's important. I think the council needs to be more concerned about public accountability. And I think the value of efficiency should not outweigh the importance of maintaining transparency and public accountability in the expenditure of public funds. I think in considering fairness, to have a competitive selection process helps to ensure transparency and the best use of taxpayer dollars by requiring bidding or RFP processes for contracts. And I think, I know it's probably going to be said that this falls in line with inflation, but I still think that the threshold is fine where it's at right now. I think raising it could lead to less oversight, potentially inflated costs and increase the risk of fraud and corruption and just playing favorites. It could have a negative impact on smaller and unestablished businesses by favoring larger or well-established firms. And I think even though there might not be short-term consequences, there could be long-term consequences and compromises made in quality, transparency and fairness. So I hope that you will vote no on this item and leave the threshold where it is at 50,000. Thanks for your time and have a good meeting.
Thank you. We have no other registrants for public comment. So we will go then to item five, which is a staff presentation, Legis. 86821 on the BCC Streamlining Project. We have Kristi Baumell and Karen Kapustapofal.
Hi there. Karen is going to kick us off, but let me share my slide deck. These are always tricky because the button to do the show is hidden under the menus from beginning. Everybody can see that? Okay, okay. Thank you, everyone. I'm Karen Kapustapofal, the Common Council Chief of Staff. And I will kick us off with some history of the BCC Streamlining Project and then turn it back over to Deputy Mayor Baumell to talk more about what we've discovered and some next steps. The BCC Streamlining Project is a project to reduce the side of, size of boards, commissions and committees, the boards and commissions and committee system to better achieve city goals for effective and efficient operations, strong accountable committees, clarity for residents on the legislative process and balancing community engagement with other opportunities for accessible, equitable engagement. One thing that many of you are familiar with, to remind everyone, this has been a process that has been ongoing over a number of years with the Task Force on Government Structure, colloquially known as TFOGS, going from 2017 to 2019. Then their work, after their final report was done, they handed their work over to the TFOGS Implementation Work Group, an Alder work group which worked on the project from 2020 to 2023. And then the work was handed over to the Common Council Executive Committee. And we've been working with CCEC from 2023 to present to carry on the work. Okay, sorry. So TFOGS was convened by the Common Council to review a number of topics related to the BCC system. They investigated the issues extensively and made several findings about the current system and recommendations for improvement. They ultimately recommended reducing the total number and potentially, of committees and potentially restructuring them. As part of their evaluation of whether we should reduce the number of committees in Madison, TFOGS members compared us to our peers and found that we have far more committees than the average number of peer committees. After TFOGS submitted its report and recommendations, the TFOGS Implementation Work Group was created to explore next steps for implementing them. In 2023, the work of the TFOGS Implementation Work Group was handed over to CCEC. We've been carrying on the project ever since then with them to both identify opportunities for reducing the number of committees as well as next steps for additional needed system-wide improvements in training and consistency. All right, I'll hand that over. Thank you very much. So I'm going to go back to those goals that Karen had on the first slide and talk a little bit more about what we're trying to accomplish and why we think a smaller number of boards, committees and commissions can help us accomplish this. So as you saw on the last slide, we have many more committees than, than our peers. And on the slide before that related to TFOGS, they did recognize a number of issues between our committees of varying levels of staffing and accountability, some overlapping purposes and a number of ways that they thought they could be improved. And they really did think reducing the number was a way to improve that. And I'm going to articulate a little bit more about
And I'm going to articulate a little bit more about why and how that relates to our goals, and then talk about what we're proposing in this work. First, with effective and efficient operations, this is related to just really focusing where we allocate staff time, Alder time, and legislative referrals. I think many of you who were very engaged in the budget process and referendum process last year will remember that a number of people said they wanted us to work very efficiently and effectively and make sure we were using their tax dollars well. So this is in support of that. Clarity for residents, when tracking an issue, figuring out how to navigate the committee structure and where you need to show up and where it's important for you to spend your time can be difficult, especially if there's multiple committees, or if there's a topic you care about trying to track, what committee it might logically be on the agenda of. So I think a more, the point here is a more streamlined process can help residents seek that clarity and a more efficient process as they move through a system on issues and topics they care about. Another is related to strong accountable committees. So you'll also recall, over the last year, we've talked about, you're all well aware at this point, that our budget does not scale with our population growth, right? And then that means our staffing doesn't scale with our population growth. Staff have been stretched thinner, and that affects all of their work. It includes the amount of time that they can spend on committees, and that shows up in what TFOGS noticed about our committees, it shows up in what we see in terms of Alders' input about our committees, what staff input about our committees, is they sometimes just, frankly, can't give all the robust, strong support that they should have because they're staffing a high number of them. And the idea here is that if we can centralize that a little bit and reduce the time that's going to the kind of general administrative role of setting up meetings, you know, planning the agendas, making sure you have quorum, getting them recorded, getting the minutes typed, there's kind of that administrative piece. If we can centralize this a little bit more, we can focus in and give that stronger staff support to making sure we have well-supported, well-trained, or well-onboarded, robust committees working on really substantive work. But it's very difficult to get all of our committees up to that level with the number we have. So then the last is accessible, community-oriented engagement. And I guess this goes a little bit to what committees are and what committees aren't, what roles they fill, what roles other things might fill better. Committees are a source of engagement. We have members, residents, who serve on them, and we have people who are welcome to speak on them. But we also need to recognize that's not everybody's ideal form of engagement. These are speak into the microphone, follow Robert's rules, in a recorded meeting, either getting your three minutes as a resident or as a committee member. This is not widespread, broad-based, accessible-to-all-community engagement. It's important. It's an important part of city processes, but we need time for both. And particularly, we've heard a number of residents that, you know, part-time Alders who are trying to engage more in their districts, and we recognize that this is a way to kind of rebalance between time spent in committees and time spent engaging in your district and having that FaceTime with your constituents, based on how many committees you're all serving on. So these are a number of ways we're trying to achieve this, and so then the question becomes how. How is a big question, and we've looked at it a number of ways over time, and this includes a lot of surveys that were done during TFOGS, data gathering on different committees, interviewing and talking to Alders, interviewing and talking to staff, comparing mission statements to look for topics of overlap. It's been looked at a number of ways, and we've come up with a presentation, or I'm sorry, a proposal. Along the way, some of this work happened as we were looking at it. I'm not going to read through all of this for the sake of time, but you might remember a recent change, combining two housing committees or combining two transportation committees. So we've also been doing the work while we've been making a plan for more. And so now I'm going to walk you through a proposal, and this is in stages. One, a proposal that we're aiming to put forward in this quarter, in the beginning of the year, for a first round of changes, a proposal that will follow for other changes that we're looking into, exploring, and then beyond those, looking at all of those staffing and quality assurance improvements, onboarding, training, work plan development with committees, making them strong, taking the steps to make them strong like I was talking about in the prior slide. Before going on here, I want to say this is where it gets hard. This is not easy. We created all of these committees because we value them, right? These are bodies of work we value. I think I could, there's no list of committees I could pick and put up here that everybody in the room would probably be happy with because it's a difficult proposition. I think there's, so we've just done our best to look through all of those lenses of analysis to say if we want more engagement in more of a grassroots way, if we want a clearer pathway for residents, if we want to be more efficient with those taxpayer dollars, if we want to better support our committees, how are we going to do this? And I will say, there's a difference between doing the work and how to do the work. So nobody's proposing not to do the work. It's a matter of how. So this is, we're going to still have these areas of focus of importance in the city. We're going to still do community engagement around these topics. So that's just a preface to say none of this is intended to say we're diminishing the value of any of these by proposing a change. So here's what we're proposing, and that we've, so one, in quarter one, we're proposing to develop an ordinance that does a few things. One, there's a few committees we're proposing to combine, and one is related to community This is an area where we recognize there's topics that overlap that are disaggregated by the age group that they're addressing, but similarities in the needs and the services that we're talking about. We think there's an opportunity to look at them all together in kind of a multi-generational spectrum and have a stronger committee with all of those perspectives at one table. And so that's one proposal we're making. A second, this actually, the Economic Development and Vending Oversight that you see here may in time bleed over to that second tranche, but we're also starting work on it now. Economic Development and Vending Oversight Committee both work with small businesses, and there's perspectives there that we also think could make one stronger committee bringing both together, from people who are right on the sidewalk to all levels of business. And I think, I think those other kind of, I think they can inform each other. We've started talking to them about this, and it can make for a stronger, more robust, holistic perspective on how we're working with business. We've, I'm getting tongue-tied. We've proposed some to dissolve and do that work in a different way, shift those responsibilities elsewhere. One, a CDD Conference Committee, this is kind of a committee, it's not meeting actively, it's outlived its purpose, it's a relic of another time, that where there were funding sources and needs for multiple committees to have a meeting place where they could come together. It's not really needed anymore, so we're proposing to dissolve that. Downtown Coordinating Committee, we reckon, this is a committee that is charged with urban design and placemaking in the downtown area. We recognize there's a lot of different bodies out there that focus on placemaking and investments in the downtown area, city or non-city. So you have Destination Madison, you have Downtown Madison, Inc., you have The Bid. And then there's other committees that are city committees that do think about placemaking, although not focused on downtown, but certainly not excluding downtown. The Arts Commission, for example, or Landmarks Commission is a couple of examples. Moreover, I think there's a number of, when we do have placemaking projects downtown, we have pretty robust engagement systems, so I don't think that that engagement would go away at all. It would just be the matter in which it occurs. Ho-Chunk Nation City of Madison Coordinating Committee, this is a committee that has not met for 12 years, and our first, our first action on this was to reach out to the Ho-Chunk Nation. This is, this is something that met in the past. We asked them if this is a way they were interested in engaging or whether they would prefer to continue engaging other ways. They supported engaging in other ways. We would certainly like to increase Ho-Chunk Nation representative presence from Madison on other committees on topics of interest to them, but they were supportive of not meeting in this fashion. So we're proposing to take this off the books. Public Safety Review Committee, this first came up over a year ago, I believe, in an ordinance from Alder Harrington McKinney to dissolve PSRC. And at that time, the vote was essentially to wait until there was more analysis and looking at this. And in looking at it, I think we saw some overlap, not in mission, but in occasional activities in terms of what PSRC and PCOB would ask for briefings on, but ultimately that didn't really drive our decision. What really came out through that process in terms of looking at outcomes was that the council has for years now had a practice of looking at public safety issues as a council as a whole. There's monthly reports, there's quarterly briefings, there's been a practice of establishing an ad hoc committee if there's a desire to look into public, public safety policy, like the body worn cameras, for example. And so it seems like this is the way in which the council has for many years been interested in pursuing public policy. Other changes, Urban Forestry, or more informally, the Tree Board. A Tree Board is something that is a function that we have as a city, we're actually required by the state to have, and it has long lived in parks, in their Habitat Stewardship Subcommittee. But several years ago, our Urban Forestry Division moved from parks to streets, and most of the work they do is on street trees. Most of the issues they have to sort out are not related to the health of the tree, they are professional arborists, they know about tree health. It's about coordinating between different utilities, height of branches with utility lines, or what's going on underground. Those public works-related issues or interactions with other public works-related agencies are the issues they work out most often. So we're proposing changing that over. And then finally, we're proposing adding a little flexibility to the CDBG Committee Membership. They have some seats that are very narrowly defined in terms of what types of members they're seeking, with good intent, but we have found, we've been challenged to keep those seats full, so we're aiming to create a little more flexibility in that membership so that we can keep that committee fully staffed more consistently. Next, later on, there's, these are the things we're looking to pursue. I think the Economic Development and Vending Oversight may take a little longer because of the quasi-judicial functions of VOC and the fact that they are in their peak point of year with spring vending permits. We just want to make sure we get that right in terms of the language. So rather than bringing that forward in an ordinance in Q1, we may bring it forward in a resolution directing staff to go and do that work and make the plan of how it would come together and then bring it back to the council. Likewise, the resolution could set some intent and direction for some other things that we're currently exploring and don't have a recommendation on yet, but they're here for information. One is we have a number of civil rights awards that make awards through different bodies. There's some exploration of whether it would make sense to bring them together in one body. The Joint Campus Area Committee is largely around UW projects, and there's a, we're exploring whether staffing and ownership of that should move to the University of Wisconsin versus the city. And then likewise, a suggestion was made to explore the same thing for the City County Schools Collaborative. So these are not things we have finality on or a recommendation on, but I wanted to share that we're exploring them. And then just very quickly, I know I've been talking a long time, but this is after that, with a known quantity of committees, we would be staffing, we would work on that plan to institutionalize all of those onboarding, training, kind of those work planning quality items. So right now, we are having informational discussions with each of the boards, committees, and commissions that I just talked about, and getting input from them. Our hope is to introduce legislation to implement these changes in February, and ordinance and resolution, as I mentioned, with potential council action in March, and then continued work after that on those further changes. And this is very much a joint project between executive office staff, mayor's office staff, and city council staff, and also done in coordination with CCEC. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions for Karen and Kristi?
One quick thing, I believe, is our legislative analyst online?
Yes.
Great. Wonderful. I just wanted to also just give thanks to Isaac Mathias, the Common Council Legislative Analyst, for his work. He helped us a lot with the research, and he's also here tonight to help answer questions.
Thank you. Alder Rommel?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I was actually thinking about you when you were in the council. You were part of some effort that looked at committees versus commissions, and I'm wondering if this group has weighed the difference of the power of the different types of committees? Like, I'm thinking, for example, that the Economic Development Commission doesn't seem really to have, it's more advisory and doesn't really have--
It's a committee.
--as, and maybe that changed, and I'm getting it wrong, but, you know, that's the kind of thing I'm thinking about.
That was one of the ones that we changed.
You changed it to that?
Yeah. Back in the day, we changed the Economic Development Commission to the Economic Development Committee.
So it had been a commission and then, but anyway, so that, those distinctions seem somewhat relevant, and you didn't mention.
No, you're right. I didn't mention it, but thank you for that. That is, I think, something that could, I breezed through those later steps of what we would really look at in detail for more, just kind of overall whole system quality improvements. I think that could be looked at there, if it makes sense. We had certainly thought about what guidance we have on when to create a new committee or commission, when to sunset one, and thought about making more robust guidance there. So I think that that totally makes sense as something that could be looked at there.
And also, did you, and I'm sorry, didn't dive into all the things you might have presented, talk about every agency's, like, what's their committee load? You know, it seems like some maybe have more than others.
Yes, they sure do. We did look at that, and I don't have all of the numbers off the top of my head, but there was a couple that stood out to me. Let's see if I can get this right. So we have the Department of Planning, Community, and Economic Development, one department, I think five divisions, I should know this by now. DPCED has 23 committees, whereas you can take all of public works, and there's nine. I think CDD alone has eight, Planning has seven. So we did recognize that there were some areas where, yes, I guess I'm going on, but yes, we looked at that, and there are some kind of disproportional numbers from one to another.
And also, I guess my final question is, did you all look at changing the number of Alders on committees?
We, yeah, we have looked at that a little. There has been some support for that, that was suggested in CCEC. We have in committees that we're proposing to reform here, so like taking three from CDD and creating a new one out of it, or taking two from Economic Development and creating a new one, we've looked at, we've talked about how that might show up in membership. We also, if I were to go back to what I breezed over so quickly, said reviewing membership criteria is something we want to look at, and within that was perhaps on it as a standard, having two, no more than two Alders per committee.
Thanks for everyone's work on this.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bahili?
Thank you. Thank you, Kristi. Thank you, Karen. A couple of questions. So for the, in one of your slides, you indicated a strong accountability committee. What measures are you looking into to make the committee strong? For example, let's say Alders attendance or committee-- For example, let's say, alder's attendance or committee attendance, how is it more effective in that committee? Are there any metrics that are used to see how the committee is more engaged?
That's an excellent question. And how we've been thinking about it so far is kind of some certain standards that we would think that should be met across the board consistently, such as every member getting training. We hear cases where, like, a member will show up in the middle of a body of work, and it takes them a while to figure out and orient themselves within that work. Every chair, every chair does get some training. We'd like that to be more robust training. In terms of staffing, planning agendas together with your chair. And some committees, like, let's say Plan Commission or something like that, has, you know, just legislative referrals that populate their agendas, but some are more, are not populated with legislative referrals. They're populated with more proactive planning, so consistently developing work plans for the course of the year to guide the work. So we've been thinking about it as kind of a list of things we would like to see consistently. What I don't have a solid metric for, but is, but you're prompting me to think more about it, is the work that goes on in the meeting, how well-supported the members are to really dig in and give, you know, have that robust dialogue between staff and members to really help further and advance the work and be supported enough to give recommendations that are really strong, informed, and meaningful. And I don't quite know how to put a metric to that, but it's a really good prompt to think about that.
I'll just chime in briefly that I think part of this question of the effectiveness of committees, really, you know, we want very engaged, responsive committees, which involves very engaged, responsive committee members. And I think that one of, that's one of the things we absolutely need to continue our work on. Whatever you decide in the next few months, we need to keep working on how to get that. How you go about it, we can all talk, but it needs to happen. And I think to your point, we could be looking at questions of more guidance, rules. I think it depends kind of on what we're looking at for these types of things. What does engagement, what does it mean to be a member of a committee? What's expected of you? What's expected of you as an alder on a committee? What is expected, you know, what happens if? And, you know, give some more strong guidance on what happens in those cases. And I think that that's something that we absolutely want to explore.
Thank you. As a follow-up, and I don't know if this is the mayor's office, for committees, when we have, and maybe the second question is, how do we have some committees, three alders and two alders? What's the determination to have that? And secondly, are there any accountability to the alders to attend those meetings? Because some of the meetings I do, I see some of the alders don't show up, and they don't even send excuse. So I'm wondering, you know, like, how are we holding ourselves accountable and to the committee?
So I think that's a great question. The current system, and folks can chime in, under the current system, the clerk sends out reminders multiple times a year to committee staff to send to, send an email to both the mayor's office and the council office, letting us all know if someone has missed a certain number, and I'm going to get it wrong, three in a row or five and 12. I think there's two ways to get on the list, as far as I'm remembering. And at that point, then, if it's a mayor, I'll appoint T, it is up to the mayor as to what, if any, action to take. What was I, I lost my train of thought. Oh, and in terms of the ordinances, I think I would defer to the folks who've been here for the creation of some of these standing bodies as to how they decided the number of alders. It does seem to kind of be maybe perhaps committee by committee, but that might be--
I think it goes way back before anybody who is currently here. But yeah, I don't know that there's any rhyme or reason to the number of al, I mean, I don't think it's changed, certainly not in my memory. I don't know if Alder Revere has a longer memory than me, but, no.
Yeah. And final question. For the economic development and vending, Kristi, you alluded to it might take a longer time, and, you know, thank you for coming to the economic development to present that. But those two, you know, committees are maybe stronger, one is more of a commission, like decision-making mechanism, and the other one is just advisory. How would you combine the two, and how would you, or would the committees decide whether to be a commission advisory and commission decision-making committee or whatever?
I think that that is one of the reasons it needs to take a little more time, is because there's some duties to reconcile between them. I have been thinking of it as a committee, because neither of them, they're both committees right now. But what we have is, what was talked about at that committee, and we'll go to vending oversight tomorrow night, was essentially you have, you have some people who are very focused on the vending level of business, and you have some that are more, maybe they own storefronts, or maybe they are at another place in economic development. And I think there's a way for those two perspectives to influence, each would be a good influence to the other body of work. So for example, people who are in a storefront probably have a perspective on what's going on in the sidewalk. But also, people who are focused on street vending would bring a really rich lens to the way we think about neighborhood business districts and the planning that we do around them. So I think that there's an opportunity for those complementary skill sets to really enhance the entirety of the work. There are some things to work through, VOC has more, some quasi-judicial duties, some of which may make the most sense to become part of this new committee, and some perhaps could be administered by staff. And that's part of what we'll have to work through to, you know, make sure that we're very solid on what we want to write into code before we bring forward an ordinance. So that's why we're proposing a resolution to signal their support for this, and the committees will help shape what makes sense there, as will the staff, and then we would bring that ordinance back.
Thank you. Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to the mayor's office and to council leadership for this work that you've done together. Refresh my memory of where we were at, at the TFOGS process. We had over 100 committees at that time, correct?
Yeah. We had, I believe, 102. So we, they compared us to our peers in a number of ways, whether that's, maybe it's university cities, like Big Ten cities, maybe it's university and capital cities, maybe it's Wisconsin cities. We all function in different environments, and you can see they averaged 30, 35, 25. And at the time, we had 102. That has shrunk. We're closer to 70. And, you know, we have ad hocs that come and go, task forces that come and go, and over the last five years, we have done some combining, so.
Right, yeah. So we're now down to about 71. What is a realistic number? Could we cut that in half, you think, in the next few years?
Right now, we're looking at, I mean, what I just put in front of you is going down by about 10.
Yeah, yeah.
So if there's a, I mean, if there's a will and a desire to keep working on this--
Oh, yeah, there is, I think. There is a desire. I will say, and this is less a question, and just a brief comment, if my colleagues will indulge me, the burden on staff and the burden on each of us to sit on committees that perhaps could be organized more efficiently is really an important consideration. We heard the mayor talk about how exceptional it is to have someone who's really, really good at leading committees, referencing Madeline Leopold, just stellar, but it's rare. And we, who have served on council and on committees for some time, have seen the big divergence between, and quality of leadership and chairing at different meetings. And we also heard at our last meeting, this issue that ethics training for chairs of our committees is lacking, so that basic ethical concerns, there's an excuse that the training simply hasn't been done. So I guess I do have a follow-up, a last question. You mentioned this in Q2 and Q3 as perhaps more of this training. What kind of resources are we compiling to be able to make sure that we're offering that kind of training for the chairs and for the committee members themselves, so that excuse can no longer come forward? Oh, nobody told me that I needed to conduct myself in this basic ethical manner.
So I can talk to, about, speak to some of that. Attorney Haas and I, and Kara Kretowitz, our performance management specialist, have already started the conversation, again, of reviewing and updating and consolidating training. So even though it's put on a little bit later, a timeline, we're not, we didn't, we weren't going to completely wait until you had made up your minds, we thought it was important to start, start getting going. So we, right now, the system is set up, and it, this, I mean, the question of resourcing, I probably could talk about all day, so I won't. But right now, it's set up that city staff are expected, the committee staff are expected to then train the chairs and new members. That's how it's structured. Again, I would look to the historians to tell me if that was ever any different. In 2019, there was a, early 2019, folks at the time put together a staff academy, they had people come in person, recorded it. And Attorney Haas can speak to how many things actually, ordinances and so on, have changed, as well as our whole video structure. And we have had a lot of turnover in the meantime, and that, all that material needs to be reviewed and revised. So Attorney Haas, you can speak probably a little bit to some of the ways that you get your, I mean, ethics code training across the committees, et cetera, more specifically. But I have to say that, the, I will honestly, this question of resourcing is really, is a serious question, because it's nobody's job to, nobody is dedicated to training, quality assurance, et cetera. We've all been really trying to, I don't remember the right metaphor, where you kind of try to do it with nothing kind of situation. And so we're going to keep trying, but I'm going to say, and I've said this to some of you before, that needs attention. It really does. So I don't know, Attorney Haas, if you have anything to say.
Just a couple of things I would quickly add. I think the idea is, rather than doing one massive meeting that was recorded, and not a very, you know, good recording, we're going to try to break it up into modules that are available on demand, because there's constant turnover with members of city boards and committees. But our office provides training to any committee that asks us or invites us, including the civilian oversight board at their very first meeting, we did provide ethics training, just to set the record straight on that. In addition to training on topics like the open meetings law or public records law, if they, if they needed an ask for it. I'm not sure what information members get when they're appointed, they may be given some basic information about, about the ethics code, but we also have information and training resources on our website, the city attorney's website too, that are available for anybody. But there is constant turnover, and I think we're working on this process to make it more user-friendly going forward.
Well, I do appreciate that. It does seem that if we reduce the number of committees, the lack of resources would be less of an issue. So lastly, could you put this deck into Legistar so it's part of the record? Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Tischler?
My day job is at the UW Madison campus, and we absolutely love committees. We actually have a committee on committees, and I kid you not.
We have had those in the past.
Yeah. I guess my question is, has there been any discussion on the time of day for committees? And then also, any discussion on kind of the way a committee is offered, now that we've embraced, you know, virtual technology, you know, having, whether that be a virtual, in-person, or maybe a hybrid, so.
We, systematically, on time of day or how it's offered, no, we have not talked about that yet. I think there could be, I think on time, I guess I would, I would like to explore whether that's something we should think about systematically, or whether that is a committee by committee decision based on factors unique to them, on how and where to offer them. I think that's an interesting question and one we could think about more robustly. It did come up in community services, maybe? Oh, I can't see UW Madison.
DCC, I think, as well. They definitely talked about in-person and--
So the limitation there is our IT staff. We're not able to support more hybrid meetings unless we hire more IT staff, is sort of the short version of it.
Right.
So we can talk about it all we want, but we basically, most committees are in the position of having to choose to either be in-person or be virtual. We don't, we can't really support more hybrids.
Right. Well, yeah, and there is technology where you don't need to rely as much on IT, but I, but I guess my other question is, why I brought up the time of day is, I serve on the childcare committee, and that meets during the day. And so when, when we actually have committees meet, will, will kind of affect the makeup, who's available to, to attend. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Revere?
Thank you, Mayor. If I could begin with your indulgence, I'll just answer the question you asked me earlier, and I would say that the short version is that it has organically been on a case-by-case basis for each BCC, and I could give examples. So just, one example I'll mention, which I shared at the last Downtown Coordinating Committee meeting, since it's on the hit list, if you will, is that only a few years ago, there was an initiative to add a third alder on that committee. Historically, there had been two alders, and there was an interest in adding a third alder because of the interest of certain members to serve. So that's just one example. Another quick example is ALRC. Most of the time I've been, had the privilege of being here, it's been two alders. Several years ago, it was increased to three alders, again, because of interest. So it's ebbed and flowed, I would say, on a lot of these committees from my personal experience. In terms of questions, let me begin by thanking the two of you and Isaac so much, so the three of you, Isaac is there on screen, for your work. And to disclose for the rest of my colleagues here, we've had several conversations individually, and we'll have another one tomorrow at the Vending Oversight Committee, and we've had them at other committees as well, because I happen to be disproportionately impacted in terms of your initial recommendations, as you know. So this is a, I'll try not to have too much long of a preamble, but I will say, just in terms of process at the outset, I was a bit surprised to receive the email on Christmas Eve-Eve, and then seeing that, you know, three committees I serve on are immediately impacted, potentially. But what surprised me moreover was the short timeline, and I understand the rush to get this done, I presume, before the next council is seated. Could you, one of you just confirm, is the timeline largely dictated that, to make it easier for the transition, to be when there's a new council, a term beginning, including all the heavy work the mayor and her office has to do in terms of appointing alders to committees? Is that the main factor for why this seems a bit rushed, at least to me?
I guess I will start by saying the work is actually delayed.
If you go back to TFOGS.
Well, we were, we were planning to do this earlier in 2023, and our workloads were, were, there were certain things hitting our workloads that made it difficult to give this the focus we had committed. So part of this was that we were delayed and recognizing a number of alders who've been supporting this through CCEC and trying to get back on, to get back to that. But it is also a factor to recognize that if we are planning to make a change to committee, we will have to appoint new alders to all of the committees in April. And if we were expecting one to potentially go away, it makes more sense to do it right before than right after. It's certainly, you know, it's certainly a factor that had some logic. But ultimately, there wasn't an intent to rush this. It was a, you know, a proposal-- It was a, you know, a proposal to bring something forward that we had been working on for a while, get some input from committees and, and if it was something that we felt was straightforward to draft, do so. And if we felt it wasn't, put it forward in a resolution. So I, it wasn't an intent, intent to rush it.
Okay. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. And the next question I, I have, perhaps as a follow-up to Alder Evers, and that is the question of how many committees? And I remember Karen, you shared with us at the downtown coordinating committee that, or maybe you said it to me privately after the meeting when we had a one-on-one conversation, but that this number 71 existing BCCs you're not confident of or where the number 102 came from with the work that TFOGS did? Do you want to elaborate on that before I ask the, the main question I have on that?
I can, we can both. We actually have, we did a bit of a deep dive. So we have, we have quite a bit, I think, of, of background on, on the numbers, especially the 71 number. Kristi, if you want to.
Sure.
Sort of explain a little more detail.
So we have categories of BCCs and, and I, they are ones that are state mandated, ones that we created locally, ones that we, we separately categorize task forces and ad-hocs because they come and go. And we separately categorized other people's committees that we have appointees to. And we included those because I think they, they, in terms of residents trying to navigate where to go in an environment of lots of committees or, or alders trying to find the time to balance to spend time in their districts, they still have a factor. So 71 is inclusive of all four of those. And we also think it makes sense to look at it that way when we're counting here because that's how the others were likely counted to, what shows up in Legistar. So that's the apples-to-apples comparison.
And the, the other work was done as part of TFOGS, right?
It was.
It says 2019 on there.
That was John Strange's work in TFOGS.
Yep, John, yep. We miss him. So I, I presume it's not a coincidence, so, and, and I, the reason I haven't mentioned this to either of you, or all three of you, we were in a meeting yesterday on Teams, was because just last night I looked this up. So in Legistar, coincidentally, it says there are 71 BCCs when you just click on that in Legistar. But as I look at the list, in fact, the very first BCC listed hasn't met in years. So was there any thought to, you know, you're, you're doing some work that I think is important to clean up, like you said, with very intensive communication with our partners at the Ho Chunk Nation on that committee that hadn't met in years. And, and another example is of course, the CDD conference committee hasn't met in forever. But there are other committees on here. I'll just quickly give some examples. So the very first alphabetically is Ad hoc Landmarks Ordinance Review Committee.
Done.
Right, it's done, but yet it's one of the 71 apparently. And another one, just because our wonderful chief of staff is standing right here in front of us presenting, another one of the 71 is the President's Work Group to review and revise the chief of staff position description. And I could go on and on, but another one at the top is, speaking of our good friend Alder Evers, is the Bayview Foundation Board, which of course historically the 13th District Alder has served on as the one official mayoral appointment confirmed by the council. So I wonder, could you take the time, if you haven't already, could you actually, just for our education purposes, number one, go through these and figure out how many of these BCCs we actually have? And perhaps working with Lila, you know, in the mayor's office helps with that. But, but then as you go through this further, as you all mentioned, so many of these are staffed by other entities like Dane County where we have one appointment at the most and yet they're part of the 71. And then I think the important work that you all have been done and I doing, and I guess CCEC for years is the point you just made, you should take credit for abolishing all these committees that are technically still on the books, be they resolutions or ordinances for committees that haven't met. I mean, I could give you, I could just go on and on. There's tons of examples of committees in Legistar that they say are still active when they're not, haven't met in a long time.
I think the Legistar number is 74. This is recognizing a few recent changes, but also.
In front of me, 71, so not to, again, I don't mean to correct you, Kristi. I'm just telling you I have the screen here and it says 71. You can look at my computer if you want.
Internal Legistar, 74.
Oh, I'm in external Legistar, but anyway, it's not, we can talk offline.
Some of those, the difference between that 56 and 71 is those Bayview Foundations and, and others you mentioned. And also, we did recognize that that number may, it, it does include a few that haven't re, haven't met. And then we thought about how should, we should change the slide and we recognized that the number for the other cities was gathered the exact same way. So from apples to apples, we thought, honestly, a city that is showing up as an average of 30 may have the same thing in their Legistar system in terms of appointees to other committees because their appointees would be captured that way. Or it's, so we did think for the purpose of this slide, it's an apples-to-apples number, the 56 under our purview is our state required and our local, locally created standing committees, not the ad-hocs, not the task forces, and not the ones where we appoint other members. And, and so we should clarify that more and we can do that.
Thank you.
But it's, you can still see we're, we're far above the average that we're seeing in these other cities.
Mm-hmm.
And just as a.
Yeah, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, go, please, go ahead, Karen.
And as part of our deep dive, I did actually get in touch with Lila about both Lorc and the President's Work Group yesterday. So she said it was gonna, it should be showing up by now, so I'll follow up with her. Those were removed.
Did you work with, yeah, thank you for that. Did, do you, did you work with or do you need to work with the Office of City Attorney to see if we need to amend MGOs or resolution, require resolutions to actually close the books and abolish some of these obsolete committees?
I mean, I, I think we can follow up, let's follow up more on some more of them. Those two we identified immediately as ones that needed to be dealt with, so I dealt with them.
Yeah, but not just, not just deleting them from Legistar, I mean, like, do we legally?
Oh, yeah, so there's.
Does the council have to legally act to abolish those and can that be part of your work that you're doing in the next couple of months?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yes, it can absolutely be part of the work. And if there's anything you, you know, want to provide as a list or questions about, we will absolutely be happy.
Go through this with you.
Yeah, I'm happy to go through them. The Legistar does have committees that are like, like Deputy Mayor Baumel pointed out, committees that are appoint, appointed, we have a city appointee too. And I think that's relevant for the alders in particular because y'all get appointed to those. So yes, it's a fascinating number. It's a moving target. It's been quite an adventure over the last, I've been working on this for six years, both in the previous role and this role, has been, I have a lot of feelings, which I don't know, it's kind of strange to have that many feelings about, you know, bureaucracy. But, so yes. But these six, these 56, and there are 13, 12 or 13, depending on where you look, state mandated committees. Now, as it's been discussed in the past, state mandate doesn't, state mandated, mandated does not necessarily mean we can't find some ways to make some kind of changes, but it's particularly what we spent, and Isaac can maybe speak to this a little bit as well. We spent a lot of time looking at the ones that are MGO-created because those are the ones that we have the easiest route to adjusting in some form or another. So that was really our main focus when we were doing the analysis. Now, when we reached out to alders, and thank you to those of you who took us up on it, we did also ask you about ones that were state mandated. We just asked you about your current committees, your former committees, to get some sense of your thoughts on them as, as a whole. But Isaac, I don't know if, if there's appetite to talk a little bit about the analysis, but he's absolutely happy to talk a bit more about that because we do, we do recognize that there are these differences. I, I, I just want to put a pitch in for folks too. Ad-hocs and task forces and subcommittees also take up every, I mean, they're not less work in a lot of ways.
Sometimes more.
Sometimes more. And I think that I want everyone to remember that and we can all work together on that because one of the things that TFOGS had, had said originally was what about subcommittees? And I know it's been come up, well, why don't we make fewer committees and more subcommittees? My reaction to having, right, having staffed a lot of, a number of task forces is, who've then had subcommittee, that's not necessarily going to get us where we want to go, you know? So just putting that out there as like, as we work together and with this, in this, you know, endeavor, unfortunately, that's not, it's not a silver bullet. But we looked at the ones that we could have some kind of, you know, we could just pass a different ordinance or we can make an adjustment that way or resolutions along those lines. So, but if, if you need anything, he's here.
Thank you. I will say anecdotally that, and Mayor, I would think that you may have made the same observation and maybe it's been your influence, but anecdotally, at least since the pandemic, I'll say since that's a benchmark for what of what, much of what I think we think about these days since then, is that there actually have been, we've been less inclined to create all sorts of special committees, temporary committees. Much of my tenure here, we had way more task forces and ad hoc committees and President's Work Groups and subcommittees. We have, and again, maybe it was, has been your influence, Mayor, but, but, but there, it used to be a lot more. I'll just say that.
Alder, don't give people ideas.
Isaac, did you wish to, I certainly want to appreciate all the work you've done since you've joined City Hall. Did you wish to add further commentary on the last questions?
I don't have too much to add. One thing I will note is Karen mentioned kind of the possibility of moving state mandated things around. And I think we have one example of doing that, whereas the urban forestry responsibilities that are currently located in the Habitat Stewardship Subcommittee, we are proposing moving over towards the Board of Public Works. And if I remember correctly, that is a state mandated function, kind of commonly known as the Tree Board.
Yes.
And so that is something that we considered in our analysis and different ways to make this whole system make a bit more sense.
Yep, thank you, Isaac. Yeah, it makes complete sense to transfer that one. Just wrapping up here and I'll just, maybe I want to ask a question on this, Karen, but I know you have a lot of thoughts on this and, and you and I have talked about this many times with the system-wide improvements, I think is the most critical part of all of this and all of the important work that all of you are doing. The last question I'll, I'll just ask and then I'll leave it for tonight is, you know, what I take as a positive frankly, and, and I think when you visit with us on the vending oversight committee tomorrow, you'll get, hear some relief that, that in essence, you're suggesting that, that we be given a lease on life, if you will, but, but that it would be more of a later phase, that change because it is our busy season on that committee, as you say. Could I just ask, I mean, is it, couldn't the same argument be made with, you know, what the two of you heard only in the last couple of weeks at the DCC meeting in terms of the two huge projects that we're working on now in that committee? And maybe this is a rhetorical question, admittedly, Mayor, but I, you know, I, I know this is questions and not discussion, but it seems to me that a fair, same argument that, that it sounds like you are going to make in your final recommendations about EDC and VOC merger being delayed because of the time of year and what's currently on our plates there. The same could be said for DCC, but give everyone fair warning that it.
It's largely about staff.
That it would be sunset.
I think it's largely about staff capacity and their ability to rewrite the ordinance.
Bless, bless you.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry, Mayor, I didn't follow.
I, I think the, the question of the VOC is largely about the staff capacity. As you know, there's one staff person who does all of it and she has to be intimately involved in the rewrite of the ordinance and she doesn't have the capacity to, to do both at the same time.
Can appreciate that, yes, we're in licensing.
Which I don't think is the same constraint for downtown coordinating.
Okay, if that was the main factor, yes. If it's about the lead staff or, in other words, our vending, street vending, used to be coordinator. Anyway, I don't know what the current title is with the last reclass, I think administrator is the word.
Yeah, I think that's right.
But, yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you. I'm complete for now tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. President Figaro call. Good. Alder Latimer-Burris.
Thank you so much. And I just wanted to thank you guys for the, the work. Before I ask my question, this is my preamble, but thank you for the hard work and, you know, laying out the timeline and, and giving us this information directly and just being, you know, straightforward with it, realizing that you've, you know, even that you put six years into this because we often come in as alders and take complete credit for our six years of work. So I want to just put that on the record. I'm wondering if you had any discussion on, on three things? And the first would be, have we, has, has there been discussion on increasing membership? What I'm concerned about is the consolidation of power. Also, has there been any discussion about how members are chosen, what's qualified? Because sometimes we'll get, you know, emails or comments from people that feel like they're being left out. And then the third question is really Alder Tischler's question, is did you guys think about alternating as we, some of us alders will be, you know, here for one year and potentially coming back or potentially not here, but you know what I'm saying? We're going to be alternating, so I'm wondering if there's going to be continuity there. Have you guys looked at that? Continuity within the committees? And then I guess I will close with this question is, how are, how are we going to get more information when we don't feel like we're getting enough information just from staff or the history or whatnot? And I guess I'm coming out of Hartmeyer Ice Arena on that because I did 90 hours on that and it was just like, really, is this what staff does? And I saw Isaac out, I wanted to give a shout out to Isaac, you know, I saw you out at, you know, taking notes at various committees, doing your work, listening and getting more information. So I just wanted to ask you if you can talk about those four things. And one more I just thought of is this referral business from alders. Are we going to learn how to, maybe this will help us make more complete referrals, why we're doing it, one of the requirements that's sometimes enforced and sometimes not, why it's appropriate to go there? Because oftentimes you look at the list, you're like, where should I send this? So I think you get the gist of what I'm saying. That's five questions.
All right, let's see if I remember them and then you can remind me of the ones I forget.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, referrals. I think that the navigability, if that's a word, of the system shows up also in that challenge. Where would you like to bring it? What's in scope? What's not in scope? With all the committees, how do we become, you know, experts on every single one? Enough to know what, where the best place is, right? Or who's staffing it? I think that's, so, yes, I think that whatever you decide, these are, this goes into that bucket of we need to keep talking because we need to make that better, easier for both the public and, and the alders. I'm going to set aside the question of how alders are, or how people are chosen for committees, in case the mayor wants to address it, but just to say that this has been a live issue for a very long ti, I mean, okay, I've only been here six years. It's been for sure a live issue longer than I've been here about what, how that system should be. Should it be changed? How could it be changed? What's the logistics? We've, we've come, I feel like this has definitely been a live issue that we can continue then to have conversations. I believe TFOGS had pretty strong feelings also about that as well. And if you want a nice report to log some more hours, I would recommend that one. It has, and you can't skip the appendices, I'm not joking. The appendices are valuable in that report. So I recommend that for your, for your reading for the next little bit. And there's also, we've, we've presented in a lot of places over time, TFOGS implementation, work group has presentations and, and interim reports. We've got, CCEC's been getting reports and, and presentations as well. So there's actually, if you'd like, I, I can send you a lot of paperwork to catch up on, but at least those, beyond that, I'm not sure. I, I'm not, I'm sure there are more, but those are the ones that I'm the most familiar with. Okay, now I'm going to forget what you asked me.
Expanding membership.
Oh, yeah, those are the ones. Okay, yes, we have absolutely been talking about this issue. I, and Isaac can, can back me up on this. Isaac and I really, we put some time into thinking, we looked at the membership categories from each of the committees that we thought could, could combine into a kind of a supercommittee sort of structure. And we, you know, looked at that and tried to make some, you know, think about, okay, what would a combination look like? Maybe we expand the membership slightly and we make sure we've got downtown representation there and, you know, different kinds of expertise. Because the ordinances tell us, it, it gives guidance to the mayor's office as to what they have to, who, what, what each category needs to be. And so we absolutely looked into that because I think you're right. I think that it's not just a matter of like giving all of VOC's work to EDC as it stands and being like, have fun with that. It's, it, I mean, maybe it is if that's what you decide. However, what I would rather do is look at that whole, the membership as a whole then of all the committees we're trying to bring together and, and make. and, and make sense of that and say, okay, we've got these residents with this lived experience. What is that noise? It's, oh, okay. Oh, no. Okay. With this lived experience, this expertise, these alders from these districts, et cetera, and try to think about more broadly. That's part of why I think the, the EDC VOC type merger, we also considered at one point, DCC VOC, EDC, Isaac and I kind of put that through the paces a bit as well, because we felt like that could really, if you do it well, if you do it thoughtfully, you could really expand the, I don't know, the, the perspective, right? You bringing people together that maybe this is a unique space that can really talk about the economic life of this place. So, oh, yes, I really strongly think we need to do that, and we need to do it very thoughtfully. And then continuity was the other one I remember. Well, the mayor can talk about the one-year appointments, the, because of the staggering.
Right, so the short version is alder manic appointments will have to be one-year, yeah, alder going forward, and you passed that tonight. The resident appointments have traditionally been, and I believe will continue to be unless you all see fit to change it, either two or three years in length. And I don't know that there's any reason to change that. I will note that, that it is in ordinance that an individual resident can't serve more than 12 years. So when somebody has served 12 years, we ask them to kindly step down from that particular committee at least, and if they really are eager to keep serving, to choose another one to apply for. But I, you know, I think we will, given the decisions made to, to stagger the alder manic terms, we'll have to rely on our resident members for that continuity on committees. I would also just add that, you know, one of the conversations that has happened, sort of in parallel to this one for years now, is the question of how and where we recruit for resident members of committees. And we have received, I think that the staff have been polite to not say it, but we have received, maybe not overwhelming, but not insignificant feedback from committee members, that they feel like they're not being put to particularly good use, and that they don't get adequate support, and that they do think that some changes need to be made in order for them to want to continue to serve. And I, you know, we have seen, I think, a number of really good people decline to be reappointed because they just didn't feel like it was a good use of their time. And so I've been reluctant to do a big push on recruitment until we are able to make it a better experience for the residents that we appoint. If we can do that, I think this is the first step. I think then the, the plan for training and the work plans are the next step, and a good plan for staffing, good clarity on the purpose of the committee, the purview of the committee, and good thinking, as Karen just said, about who we need on the committee, how many people, what their expertise should be. Then I think we'll be in a position to assure residents that their time will be well spent. And then I would be very excited to do a really big push on recruitment and to make sure that collectively our appointees represent our community and a range of perspectives and a range of expertise, because that's kind of the whole point. But I really don't want to put people in a position of asking them to volunteer their time and not having them feel like they're not being productive or being helpful. And I want them to feel valued and, and well-supported. And I'm hopeful that we are on a path to get there.
Thank you so much. I think resources are key because there's a lot of training that needs to happen, and sometimes it needs to happen in multiple ways, going back to the ethics training, which I did read everything on ethics on the website when I first started. And so it's possible not to remember everything in all these reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Remmel, additional questions?
Are we going to go to just more general comments? Because that's what I'm ready to, I do have a question though, but-
It's, I mean, this isn't before us for any action, it's just a staff presentation. So I think if you have a comment, that's fine.
Okay, well, my, first my question is, well, you know, I guess I should sort of preface it by saying, you know, I, I was like council president when we started TFOGS. And, and, you know, we launched this thing that took a life of its own, and the people that were involved in it got really engaged and came up with a lot of ideas that personally I didn't always agree with. But you know what? It moved forward, a lot of people bought into it. And I think, you know, we've seen the benefit of that process. But I have to admit that my, I'm a little bit like, maybe I'm just been around too long. I, I don't, just wanted to throw away committees, because I think about it as, it's the way we conduct the business of the city. So the question to me is, how do we conduct the business of the city? Who does it? And how can the public know about it and participate? That to me is the ultimate goal. And certainly, you know, going through some of this list, I see, okay, maybe definitely makes sense that urban forestry goes to Board of Public Works, or the CDD Conference Committee. I get that. But it, it arose because of a certain moment in time where we had to cut agencies, and they each were cutting the same agencies, and there was like a freakout. So like, oh, maybe we'll have a conversation across Community Services and CDBG. And, and, but maybe we don't need that anymore. So, so one of the thoughts I had, just from hearing this conversation today, is maybe we, aside from the, the state randated ones, maybe we have a sunset clause for every committee. And then, you know, every year, if you don't have a work plan, you don't have a quorum enough, maybe there's not, you don't get anything referred to you to do anything about, maybe, maybe that's a way forward to, you know, to consider whether things should be going forward. So I guess, I'm not even asking my question, I'm just going to say my comment. My question was, which you don't have to answer, is, you know, I am stuck on the aging, getting aging and early childhood and Community Services together. Because you know what? We're an aging community, and we have so many needs for our youth. Like, why would we get rid of those, like, really high, high needs committee? You know, why not take Community Services and put it with CDBG? Why not that? I mean, you know, maybe you all thought of it, but to me, it's just like, seeming, the CDBG seems separate because it has federal money. But you know what? So what? They can do federal and local money and do it different, you know, they can figure that out. So anyway, I'm a little bit skeptical, but I got to admit that when I first got on the council, there were a few alders, and I was one, that would get a paper copy of the agenda. Mike smiling at me, because you know what? That thing is like this, people. Because every comment that's in Legistar, every like mailing that went out to residents, everything was in that paper thing. And I would take, I put on my table, and I'd turn over every page. And I think it's so easy now to go on Legistar and skim all that stuff. But if you looked at every page, you'd be like amazed at all the stuff the city does. And you read some of those, like, engineering documents, oh my God, it's just like, you know, the language of engineering where they measure stuff, the, it's just crazy, like, but we, that's part of the business of the city, right? And somebody has to make sure it's done right and meets all the standards. So I, you know, we, as alders, rely on those committees, so that we don't have to read every single page. Because if we don't have as many committees, and it's on staff, I worry about staff having the authority that before a committee had. So I'm not saying they don't, aren't qualified to make good decisions, but I don't know that the public really wants it all, like, staff, you know, as policymakers. So I guess my long-winded comments here is, you know, Christie mentioned, how do we do the work? And I think that's really fundamental. And I think there's a lot of tweaks that, you know, I'm thinking of, like, oh, the joint campus, could that go, some of that go to UDC? Like, right? We have an architect on UDC who's, sees some of those things, and they present them. Maybe that's where it should go for the project. So it seems like there might be other answers, but I just worry about just this wholesale of like, yeah, let's just get rid of committees. So I'm, like I said, I want to, you know, through the next few months, carefully look at it. Like, for example, PSRC, they have actual authority over the police budget. You want to just throw that away? For who? PECOB doesn't have any authority over the police budget. It took a while to get the, the PSRC to even sort of look at the police budget, or have the police staff be able to present budgets. And it probably got a little crazy for a while, but like, is, is anybody looking at that besides us when we're like, you know, have a, you know, during budget season where we don't see everything? So I think there's a role for some of these committees, and certainly we can consolidate and combine and possibly eliminate some. But, you know, we heard from one member of the public today who sort of balances accountability and efficiency. So I just want to make sure that our local democracy, I'm so proud that we have a really active local democracy. People know, I mean, they know what's going on. Well, not everyone, but you know, they try to, some people do, we tell them. And so I think that's important to, to keep balancing. And I don't think it's just like, you know, efficiency for efficiency's sake should be the, the main goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder, you go.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a question I know can't be answered tonight, but perhaps we could get something from finance for the meeting at which we make an actual introduction of a resolution. But I think in terms of our pledge to find more efficiencies, if we could put a dollar number on the advantage of combining a committee or some of these other actions, it would be helpful. And I know that a lot of what we've talked here, or some of the things under consideration, can't be monetized as such. Even the savings probably aren't realized, but they, they would stand for what we might not have to expend in terms of additional staff as this city grows. So if Director Schmidke could perhaps, when he becomes available, give us some numbers on what this might mean, it might be helpful. Because I think there are questions that will come up in the next budget process and so forth, and terms of that long-range plan that we work so hard on. Thank you.
I have asked for a similar thing. Alder Conklin.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to make a few remarks, because I have been a supporter of this. I think that this is important that we do. And I think folks should understand that we're not eliminating active committees that are doing work. We're trying to get rid of ones that are no longer useful, that are not meeting quorum, that are not meeting, that are not getting any public comments or ordinance changes or anything. So, and then I think it's also understand, like, we're not eliminating committees just to get rid of them. We're putting committees together to make sure that they're not working in silos. So when, you know, when it comes down to the early childhood and the aging committee, that's like the circle of life, right? So we need to be communicating with the youth to understand how we're going to support the aging community. So I think it's really important, I'm sorry, I think it's really important that we don't think that we're just getting rid of committees that are doing work and that are useful and that are getting quorum and public comments. So I just want to see us work together, because we have all put in so much time and effort in really looking at these committees and getting comments from people and people who are sitting on the staff. There's people who want more. They want more. They want to be able to do the work and be useful on the committees. So I, I think we're headed in the right direction. I support this. I will continue to support this and look at this. But yeah, we, we all know that there's way too many. It takes up too much staff time and alder time. And we want to be able to continue to serve our constituents. And the best way doing that possible is obviously with community building engagement. So, you know, if we're able to get more time to do that, to better serve our constituents, I think that's going to make everyone, the city of a Madison, happy and as a whole. So thank you for the work that you're doing on this, Karen, Isaac, and Deputy Bumout. I appreciate you, and let's just keep working. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other alders in the queue with questions. So thank you both for the presentation. Just add that part of the point of having this before you all tonight was to bring it to your attention and give you a chance to engage with it. Obviously, there's nothing introduced yet. And so we really invite you to talk with staff if you have further reflections, ideas, questions, proposals, inclusions, exclusions. That's why we're here, so that folks really understand the work and what the intention moving forward. So, thank you. All right. So that will take us then to item 36, which is Legistar 86652, amending sections of the Madison General Ordinances to increase the threshold requiring competitive selection of service contracts from 50,000 to 75,000 and make other clarifications. On item 36, President Figaro call a motion, please.
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. We will start with questions for staff, and I will note that the Finance Director is present online. So Alder Knox, did you have questions?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, Alder.
I was actually wanting my question, is Norm Davis here?
I don't believe so. No, Alder.
But perhaps the Finance Director could ask this too. I guess my question is, knowing what the implications of such a proposal would be in terms of small and disadvantaged business enterprises? Can you kind of elaborate on that? I, I understand the process piece of saving, but I just wonder if it could have some negative consequences for smaller businesses and disadvantaged business enterprises.
Alder Knox, thanks for that question. That question came up at the Finance Committee last week. And as we answered at that time, we've been engaged for a couple of years now on an equity and contracting initiative. We have made changes to procurement standards and, and processes related to that. That includes changing when agencies have to go and get three quotes. So for contracts below 50,000 right now and above $10,000, that'll move to 25 and 75 if the ordinance is adopted. Agencies have to get three quotes. One of those quotes has to be from a local business, and one has to be from a minority or women-owned business on the sort of list of businesses that DCR and Economic Development help develop. So we've made, I think, a number of changes. We're looking to simplify the RFP documents process, make it more approachable for local, locally owned and minority and women-owned businesses. And we're developing, hopefully, in the next year or so, dashboards for each agency, so they can see what their spend is and how much of that spend is related to locally owned businesses, as well as minority and women-owned businesses. We report annually to the council on the amount of spend to locally owned businesses. So there is a major focus on that through our procurement and purchasing processes. And those will continue to be amplified and expanded, even with this increase in, in the RFP threshold. And actually, that change helps us to do more of that work, both in purchasing and in the agencies, in terms of processes to outreach and make, make it more approachable for locally owned and minority and women-owned businesses in the city and in the county.
So what I hear you saying in some way is raising the threshold, you will have a little more flexibility in finding some of those smaller disadvantaged businesses without having to have a, a bid process?
Well, we still have a quote process.
Okay, you still have the quote.
Still three quotes. You still, agencies still have to get three quotes. It just don't have that sort of more complex and time process associated with requests for proposals, you know, the level of valuation that's required. proposals, you know, the level of valuation that's required for those. And I think it was mentioned by folks earlier, we talked a little bit about it in the Finance Committee, you know, we are seeing inflation, obviously, in terms of, you know, the buying power of, say, 50,000 or 75,000. And so this sort of helps us kind of focus that time and energy on, on those larger dollar contracts, but, and then free up the time to do more with trying to get more local, locally owned business participation, minority and women-owned business participation in the city's contract and vendor process.
Did it satisfactorily meet the equity analysis process?
We did not go through an equity analysis process on this. We felt that what we were doing in the Equity and Contracting Initiative is, is a lot of that same work, in terms of looking at processes, outreach to the community. It's been a multi-agency effort on this. DCR has been involved, engineering, economic development, and other agencies involved in the contracting process. Just a reminder that the, the contracts we're talking about here in this ordinance do not cover public works contracts. So that, that is a, that's all defined under state law. And, but we have been working through this equity and contracting process to do more through those processes as well, to the extent sort of allowable under state law. We can do a lot with outreach, education, streamlining, contracting processes as much as we can.
And, and would it be a correct assumption to assume that most of the small or disadvantaged business enterprises, including minority and women enterprises, are more service contracts than, like, for example, public works or things like that?
Yeah, it, we probably would have to go look at the data more on that. I don't want to kind of make a blanket statement about it. But we're certainly, you know, in the report that we send to the council about locally owned businesses, a substantial share of the spend that we have each year is with locally owned businesses. But, you know, there are, particularly in the public works area, maybe contractors who might be outside of the region, outside of the city, who do some of that work. I think public works, you know, engineering is also trying to look at, you know, maybe novel approaches on how to do that type of contracting. Maybe it's breaking up those contracts into smaller pieces, so that they can be more approachable by smaller businesses, disadvantaged businesses in the community.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer-Burris, questions?
Thank you. I have a question for Director Schmiedeke. And I wasn't gonna ask this question, but since it got pulled from the agenda, I might as well ask you, rather than my colleagues. Is this the ordinance that was used, that the city used to send out the referendum postcard? And if so, if so, how, how was it able to be almost doubled? I'm just curious. You could just ask, you know, even just ask the first question. I'm wondering if this is the same one, just for a point of reference. Thank you.
I believe that was done, you know, the cost of that was below the $50,000 threshold under the current ordinance. But I would probably have to defer to either Dylan Brogan or Sam Munger on the specifics of that question.
Thank you. I was just trying to, but this is the ordinance that was used to get that done. I'm just, for point of reference for my brain.
No, Alder, I don't think that's correct.
Okay, thank you. I'll have to check with Dylan. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder, are you here?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And this is with regard to the inflationary aspect. Do we have the date when the $50,000 threshold was set?
It's been within the last, you know, at least five to 10 years. We, we have increased it. It was 25,000 at one time.
Okay, okay. So let's say it was 10 years, and it was 2014. And the reason I'm asking is, I've just got the Bureau of Labor Statistics calculator here, and we could argue about whether the CPI is the right number. Maybe it's the Producer Price Index, but I think it'll be close. So $50,000 in 2014 is now 60, roughly $68,000 now. So, really, we're not talking about tremendously changing, would appear, the threshold in terms of what we're actually buying with these contracts. Inflation is a significant thing here.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. And I'll, I'll add that the 25,000 limit was in place for many, many years. And so, that, that increase, 50,000, probably did not sort of catch up with all the inflation that occurred between when the 25,000 was put into place and the 50,000 change was made.
Thank you, Director. That's all I had.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaro Cole?
Thank you, Mayor. Dave, so can you please refresh our memory, how many contracts do we, do we have in 2020, you know, in the past few years, when it comes between 50,000 and 75,000? How many RFPs are we talking about?
Yes, thanks for that question. In 2023, the number of RFPs between 50 and 75,000 were 13, 13 RFPs that kind of fell in that, between those dollar thresholds.
So this will kind of impact about 13 per year, or something like that, so far?
Right. They would move into the, that sort of three quotes process.
And to follow up on, on the questions of Alder Knox, where can people go to find the procedures for purchasing, so they can look at the documentation in regards to the quotation process, the equity tools that are used, and the process for approvals? Because, I mean, I take it that anything, just because you're the Finance Director, doesn't mean that you're the single person signing off these contracts, right? There's, there's processes in place that, to route the, there's extra eyes on the process, I should say.
That's correct, yep. I, I can send a link to the purchasing page to all, all council members. It's, it's on the Finance Intranet page, which is accessed through Employnet. And there's a purchasing link on that page that'll take you to all the purchasing guidelines. It'll link you to a presentation about what I talked about on equity and contracting, and, and how purchasing processes have been changed in response to that, and other information that's meant to be used by agencies in terms of following the procurement processes.
So are they, do we have also availability, maybe, I think, on the Civil Rights page? I'm not sure. Showing purchasing, purchasing processes for the public to examine also?
I'm not familiar with what's on the DCR page with that.
Yeah, so if we can, that, that would be fine. If you can send those links, I really appreciate it.
Sure, certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bahili?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director, for three RFP requests, for, was there a reason for that? That one of them needs to be local? Or could we change the ordinance to have two local RFP, to increase local businesses, empowering local businesses to do business with the city?
So these are in the purchasing guidelines and standards, so that is not in the ordinance. So we did that administratively. And we changed it from, I don't know if it required a, a local vendor before that, but we went, there's a minimum of three quotes that you have to, that agencies have to get. And one of those needs to be from a locally owned business, and one from a disadvantaged business. So that's the change that we made as a part of this equity and contracting effort.
So in other words, one is local, and then one is minority-owned business, and the other one can be?
That's also, that's also local.
Okay, right.
And it's just a minimum?
Minimum, okay.
Right? That, that, all three could be from a, a local minority-owned business.
Right.
It's just a minimum.
And we've been doing a, a lot of outreach to agencies to give them more information. This is the effort in conjunction with the Department of Civil Rights and the Economic Development Division, sort of give that information to agency purchasing staff, so that they are more aware of the vendors that are out there in the community.
That's good. Yeah, yeah, the reason I ask that is to increase, like, if it's more, so more local businesses can participate, the process, if it's more money, then they might feel that they may not qualify or so. So it's good that we have that metrics in terms of encouraging local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. As one of the original authors of our local purchasing policy, I agree. Alder Duncan?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question. Is, is the purpose of this to potentially align with the state's RFP? Or do we, what is the state RFP for the amount?
Alder, I'm not familiar with the state's level on that. So it was not an effort to try to align with the state at all.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue with questions. It's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Seeing none. It's been moved and seconded. Is there objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection? Alder Govindarajan?
Please mark me as no.
Alder Govindarajan will be noted as marking, if we're gonna do it, we're gonna do a roll call, folks. Alder Latimer-Burris?
Okay, we can do a roll call.
Thank you, Alder. Those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called. And the clerk will please call the roll.
Thank you. Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Alder Conklin, aye. Alder Curry?
Aye.
Alder Curry, aye. Alder Duncan?
Aye.
Alder Duncan, aye. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Alder Evers, aye. Alder Field?
Aye.
Alder Field, aye. Alder Figaro Cole?
Aye.
Alder Figaro Cole, aye. Alder Govindarajan?
Alder Govindarajan, no. Alder Uguere?
Aye.
Alder Uguere, aye. Alder Herring to McKinney, sorry, Alder Herring to McKinney. Do not see her. Alder Knox?
Nay.
Alder Knox, no. Alder Latimer-Burris?
No.
Alder Latimer-Burris, no. Alder Madison?
Aye.
Alder Madison, aye. Alder Martinez-Rutherford?
Aye.
Alder Martinez-Rutherford, aye. Alder Miazze?
Aye.
Alder Miazze, aye. Alder Rumel?
Aye.
Rumel, aye. Alder Tischler?
Aye.
Alder Tischler, aye. Alder Viver?
Aye.
Alder Viver, aye. Alder Willella?
Aye.
Willella, aye. Alder Bennett is excused. Alder Herring to McKinney?
I don't see her.
Fair enough. Very well, we have 15 ayes and 3 noes.
Thank you. With 15 ayes and 3 noes, the motion passes. That will take us to the end of our agenda. Are there any announcements or introductions of items from the floor? Seeing none. And Alder Conklin, it's your turn.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we stand adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.